I'll call this meeting to order. I'll entertain a motion to approve the reading and approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Awards. The Northeast Pennsylvania Environmental Partnership Award. Chris?
I don't have that.
You don't have it?
No.
Pardon me?
Nicole's gonna talk about it.
Nicole, you want to come up and explain this?
How do you not have it?
I don't have either one.
Morning.
Morning.
So I think about two months ago, I got this award. The Pennsylvania Environmental Council, it's like a statewide organization, and they, you know, promote partnerships in the environmental field. They do a lot with watersheds, you know, they support my efforts with recycling and our Earth Day event. So they recognized all the work that we do. One of the big things Markey and I do in the office is we like to work with whoever would want to work with us. So just throughout all the projects we did this past year, we were nominated and won the award, which is really neat. It was a beautiful dinner, and they had a whole film crew and everything, and that they, and they played like a video at the dinner. So really neat, so early in my career to get this. And it just, and it's just nice to be recognized for all the work we do.
You have done a great job, Nicole.
Yeah, you do.
You really have.
Your big staff, you and your big staff do a great job.
Yep, yep, us too.
That's a step up. It was a staff of one.
Yeah.
So it's actually going in the right direction, but you have, you've done a great job, and we thank you for everything.
Congratulations.
And you have passionate people working in the office. A lot can get done, so.
Rick?
Thank you.
Nicole, you want to come up here?
Do you have my flag?
I didn't have it.
Good, how are you?
One more here. Very good.
Thank you.
Nicole has done a phenomenal job. Pennsylvania Library Association President's Award, Mary Garm.
Good morning, commissioners. How are you today? Thank you so much for recognizing me with this honor today of being here. The Pennsylvania Library Association is a statewide organization with about 1,800 members. They have something called the President's Award. It has been given only four times in the history of the association, 120 years. First time was to Governor Tom Ridge, another time was to Representative Stan Saylor, and the third time was to longtime Director of the Allentown Public Library, Catherine Stefanoff. And I'm the fourth person.
Wow.
Yeah. It was very much a surprise and very much a thrill. It's amazing to be recognized by your peers, especially in your own lifetime, which is kind of a wonderful thing. The recognition came as a result of a couple of things that I've worked on over the past years statewide, and one that I'm probably most proud of is something called Pennsylvania Library Association's Academy of Leadership Studies. And this started back in 2008, 2009. We realized that there were a lot of library leaders who were getting ready to retire, and a lot of very new young librarians who didn't have an opportunity yet to experience leadership. So we established a program called PALS for short, and it focuses on personal and professional leadership. And we've had hundreds of librarians in Pennsylvania who have since gone through the program. It continues today. So that is one of the things that has been really important to me. I read something the other day that said, "Your legacy is not what you do, it's the people you touched." And so I think it's wonderful to have, you know, had hundreds of people have the opportunity to explore their own leadership styles. So I do want to say that one of the things that I'm very proud of is that Lackawanna County Library System has an exceptional reputation in the state. And a big part of that comes from the continuing support that we have had from county government. It means a lot, doesn't happen in every county in Pennsylvania. So I'm really pleased to have had an opportunity for the last 20 years to work with you all to provide exceptional library services to the people of Lackawanna County. And thank you today for recognizing me.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think, I think your exceptional job is the reason that things work so well here. And we developed a literacy committee with the help of, you know, Sandy Lamont and Tracy Hart. Tracy Hart was a big driving factor on that.
Right.
And I think President Obama decided that literacy is a health issue.
It is, isn't it? Absolutely, yeah.
And I think that's, you know, really important, and I think that we have to, so between Sandy Lamont and Tracy Hart and yourself, I just want to thank you all to try to help and protect our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to point out, too, that Sandy Longo, who will be taking over as the next leader of the library system in January, is also a member of that committee and has been very active with it. So we've been grateful to Tracy's leadership on that project, and we look forward to continuing that.
Tracy's done a good job. Would you all like to come up and, we got a picture with Rick?
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Time for you to retire. Soft step, one step.
Hold the new one in the head.
I was gonna say, you're ready, yeah.
Thank you for your job.
Thank you so much.
Opportunity for the public to address the board, agenda items only. Okay. Resolution 230339.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approving the following payables: Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 366002-366515, inclusive totaling $1,526,389.85. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $6,998,136. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230329.
This is authorization of the counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance to satisfy the public official's bonding requirements, whereas on November 23, 2011, Act 106 became effective immediately, authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance covering county officers and employees, replacing prior requirements that certain individual officers of the county have separate bonds, whereas pursuant to subsection 1130A of the Act, which requires the county of the Board of Commissioners as the governing body of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, to establish a procedure by which it shall annually determine the form and required amount of required security that will be reasonably sufficient to protect against the risks of loss in compliance with the subsection of the Act, whereas subsection 1130B of the Act permits the Board, the County Board of Commissioners to instruct the county risk manager to compile and submit information relevant to the determination of an amount of required security under subsection A, whereas section 1129 of the Act requires that the form of a blanket bond or crime insurance obtained in compliance with the Act shall be approved by the governing body of the county after review by the county solicitor in consultation with the county risk manager. Be it resolved, the county shall hereby adopt the following procedures for compliance with the provisions of Pennsylvania Act 106. Number one, the county risk manager is hereby designated to submit information to the Board of Commissioners prior to the close of the calendar of every calendar year as to the amount of security the risk manager recommends that the county maintains during the succeeding year, and to provide information as set forth to enable the Board of Commissioners to place in force the blanket bond or crime insurance required by the Act for the succeeding year. Number two, in court, in the course of performing the duties assigned above, one above, the county's risk manager shall confer with the county solicitor to determine the form and content of the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the Act. Number three, the county risk manager will obtain competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record for the blanket bond or crime insurance that will compel, comply with the provisions of the Act. Number four, upon receipt and review of the competitive proposals, the county's designated broker of record and at least two weeks prior to the close of the county every calendar year, the county risk manager shall present to the Board of Commissioners for its consideration and approval of form and amount of required security, together with the recommendation as to the blanket bond or crime insurance that will satisfy the requirements set forth in the Act adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman, this is obviously the bonds that would protect everyone from lawsuits. If you have any questions, Jack Judge, Risk Management, is here.
No? Okay. Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230330.
This is awarding the Lackawanna County Library Systems Bookmobile. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby awarding the Lackawanna County Library System Mobile Outreach Vehicle Project for a hybrid-drive bookmobile to Tech Ops Specialty Vehicles LLC, TOSV. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Library Systems Executive Director, Ms. Mary Garm.
There.
Hello again. I'm excited that we are at a point where we are ready to actually place an order, and we are, as Brian said, we are working with a company called Tech Ops, TOSV, Specialty Services. And the total price for the vehicle is going to be $671,612. As you know, we have received funding as well through the American Rescue Plan grant thing to you for $330,900. And we have been working with a consultant who has been, again, somebody that you retained on our behalf, and we appreciate that. His help has been invaluable. We anticipate 18 months to two years in terms of how long it will take to get this vehicle, but we have tried to equip it with the best energy-efficient safety measures that we could do. We also have some new and interesting ways to use the bookmobile. We have a serve-out window, so we can stop, you know, at parks or places in fine weather and, you know, have people just walk up and use our serve.
This has been a long time coming, I'm.
A long time, yes.
How old is the current bookmobile?
Oh, gosh, 2000 was the year it was purchased.
Pardon me?
It was purchased in 2000.
Okay. So by the time we get it, it'll be over 25 years old.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, and we're glad to have been able to be a part of that.
Likewise, likewise, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Mayor.
Excellent.
Thank you. Resolution 230331.
Entering into a Second Amendment to lease, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a Second Amendment to lease agreement by and between Ruth Semenaro, 1600 Forest Streets, Grant, Pennsylvania, for the use of the Magisterial District Judge's Office. The term of the lease shall be extended for a period of three years commencing January 1, 2024, and expire December 31, 2026, at a monthly rent of $1,700. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our General Counsel, Mr. Donald Frederickson.
Good morning, commissioners. As you know, the county is responsible for securing quarters for the magistrates throughout the county. Magistrate Gallagher's office is in that Orem Street location for a long time, 20 years or more. We're renewing the lease for only three years as opposed to the normal six because there's a new magistrate coming on. Terry didn't run for reelection because of his age, and his son Sean is being sworn in in January, and he wants an opportunity to become familiar with the office and possibly look to relocate. It's the oldest magistrate's office we have, and there's some issues with it, but we're going to see if we can negotiate maybe some improvements with the landlord or look for other locations. We're only doing a three-year on this one.
Okay.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230332.
Entering into a Third Amendment to a lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a Third Amendment to a lease agreement by and between the Borough of Archibald, 400 Church Street, Archibald, Pennsylvania, to lease the second floor of the municipal building for use of the Magisterial District Judge's Office. The term of the lease shall be extended for a period of six years commencing January 1, 2024, and shall continue through December 31, 2029, with a monthly rent of $1,900. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Once again, here is Attorney Frederickson.
Thank you, commissioners. Again, this is from Magistrate Turleb's office up in the Mid Valley from Archibald. We represent, we rent space in the Archibald Borough Building. It's convenient for the community, and this will be for six years, which will commensurate with her term for six years. She was just reelected this year.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230333.
This is approving an area agency on aging agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the area agency on aging agreement with your choice, Personal Care LLC, 586 Easton Highway, Hamlin, Pennsylvania, 18436, for the fiscal years 23 through 26. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Here to speak upon that is the Area Agency Aging Director, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Morning, Sarah. This agreement will not impact county funding. It's funded through the Pennsylvania Department of Aging through state and federal money. Home care is a service that the area agencies on aging are required to provide, and this specific provider is based out of Hamlin and will be able to service some of our more rural cases, which are typically difficult to staff.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230334.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging Contract Amendments. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging Contract Amendments with United Way of Lackawanna, Wayne, and Pike Counties and Intrim Healthcare Services Incorporated. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Once again, Mr. Chairman, here is Director McDonald.
Sarah. These amendments are a result of grant funding that has been awarded to the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging, specific partnerships with United Way and Intrim Healthcare. The funding is going to be used to enhance a volunteer community impact in health and wellness programs offered to older adults in Lackawanna County.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution 230335.
Approving the Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreement with the Families United Network Incorporated for the fiscal year 23 through 24. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Health and Human Services Executive Director, Mr. William Browning.
Morning, Bill.
Morning, commissioners. This contract will help us provide services in the foster homes, even foster homes that we currently run. Fund will help manage them, given our staffing shortage, so they will be responsible for doing things, linking them to services, and providing some full service for those kids that are in the homes.
Yeah, we're, I thank you, and it's been difficult, there's no question. But it's something you're dealing with well, and it's something that we plan to address later on today. Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Yep. Resolution 230336.
Approving a lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a lease agreement with the Scranton Life Realty Company for the Office of Community Corrections, term to commence immediately and expire October 31, 2025, at a monthly rate of $875 per month. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of the lease space that they're using over there until we get them someplace in the new reconstruction of the courthouse, which should happen in, you know, within the next two years.
Hopefully, sir, yeah. Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230337.
Accepting the quote from Kronos UKG. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Kronos UKG renewal quotes for the time and attendance system. Support services to cost $14,392.69, and timekeeping renewal quote to cost $50,292. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the county's Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Bozzoni.
Good morning, gentlemen. The company seeking approval for their 2024 cost schedule for providing time clock and data accrual services. The cost will increase for both service components by about 4%. Timekeeping will increase from $41,184 to $42,831.36. Data accrual will increase from $7,0275.84 to $7,566.87. We've not yet resolved the data consent issue with the company, but that matter's going to be revisited in January.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 230341.
Entering into a First Amendment to a lease agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a First Amendment to the lease agreement by and between the County of Lackawanna and the Agency for Community Empowerment of NEPA, formerly the Scranton Lackawanna Human Development Agency. To modify the terms of the lease agreement with regards to the monthly rental payments, new term to commence January 1, 2024, and expire December 31, 2030. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 30, 2023. Once again, here is the CFO, Mr. Bozzoni.
The organization is seeking to amend the contract that was executed on August 22, 2018. While several contract provisions were sought for amendment, the principal request was based on lease cost. The lease cost in 2024 increased year-over-year by 23.5% or almost $20,000, which would be a challenge for the organization. The cost would have increased from approximately $85,000 to $105,000 for 2024. The amendment lays out increases through 2030 which are more manageable. The cost would increase by approximately $2,500 into 2024, or by approximately 3%. That cost would remain the same in 2025, and then further increases would be made in 3% increments until the year 2030.
Thank you. You want to have any questions for Dave?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230344.
Entering into a Third Amendment with the Food Service Management Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a Third Amendment with Food Service Management Agreement between Lackawanna County Prison and Aramark Correctional Services LLC from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's CFO Bozzoni.
The current contract, which expires in August 2025, is subject to annual negotiated cost adjustments resulting from the amendment that was approved by the Board earlier this year. The principal contract cost is the price per prisoner meal. The existing or current contract cost is $1.31 per meal. The proposal by Aramark was to increase the cost to $1.389 per meal. The county countered with a cost of 1.355. Aramark responded with a cost of 1.376, which is what's being presented today. This cost equates to a 5.03% increase. Ironically, and not surprisingly, this percentage equates to the annual Food Away From Home Consumer Price Index published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which currently is 5.3% year-over-year. The company, Aramark, uses that statistic as a benchmark for pricing. So it's not surprising that we arrived at basically a percentage that was being sought in the first place, even though originally their proposal was greater than that benchmark statistic. At an 800 prisoner count, the total annual cost for meals will be $1,202,736.60. The cost of the same, as proposed by the county, so our original proposal, would have been $1,186,980, or a difference of $15,093.60. So the difference between what we proposed and what they ultimately proposed as the final settlement was $15,093. Our food service budget for 2024 is $1,358,082. If we add in the cost of staff meals, which is another principal component of the Aramark cost, which I estimate to be $213,017, the cost for food service will be $1,415,90.60. That exceeds budget by about $57,000, which is reasonably manageable considering where we started at, so hence the reason for recommending the approval.
Thanks, Dave. Not a lot of options either, are there, David?
Nope. Not many, no.
Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230338.
Approving the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program applications, whereas the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and whereas the Board of Commissioners are interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in the revitalization of neighborhoods, since they are the foundations, foundation for families and community values. And whereas the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available for county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations, and whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby allocate funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants for the following amounts pertaining to the Jessup VFW Post, $5544, $5,000, City Carbonell, $5,000, Marine Corps League, and Scranton, $5,000. The Scott Township Hose Company, $5,000, the American Legion Post, $665, Dixon City, $5,000, Music Red Wings, $5,000, Eureka Hose Company, number 4, and Elephant, $5,000, North Scranton Vikings, $5,000, the Mayfield Hose Company, number 1, $5,000, Queen City Hose Company, number 8, Elephant, $3,700, United Community Outreach Helping Hands Food Pantry in Blakely, $5,000, Taylor Borough, $5,000, South Abbeville Township, $5,000, Volunteer Hose Company of Troop, $5,000, Newton Township, $5,000, Premier Hose Company, number 1, and Music, $5,000, Jefferson Township, $5,000, Moxie Club and Carbonell, $5,000, Leadership Lackawanna Waverly, $5,000, and the Cougar Kickoff Club in Archibald, $5,000. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, commissioners and everyone. This resolution is approving 20 community reinvest projects totaling $98,700, focusing on revitalization and improvements of communities and neighborhoods. This is the second round of 2023 and the 27th round of the program. The overall public-private investment since its inception is approximately $23 million.
Thank you. Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230340.
Entering into agreement with Election Systems and Software. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a three-year election services agreement with Election Services and Software Incorporated, ESNS, for ballot layout, coding, and voice file services to commence April 1, 2024, covering all elections through March 31, 2027. Adopted a regular meeting in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on December 20, 2023. Here to speak upon that, Mr. Chairman, is the Election Bureau's Director, Ms. Elizabeth Hopkins.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you, Brian. This is the service agreement between Lackawanna County and Election Systems and Software LLC. ESNS has been providing ballot printing, ballot layout, coding, and voice file services for the county since 2008. The current agreement before you was for the 2024, 2025, and 2026 primary and general elections.[1788.58] I've been working with Solicitor Frederickson and our ESNS representatives over the past months on this agreement. We recently met with the representatives to go over their initial proposed agreement. We were successful in negotiating minimal increases from the previous three-year agreement. And fortunately, the current election integrity grant does cover our ballot printing expenses, and we're quite satisfied with ESNS. So it would be my recommendation to approve this.
Thank you. You have any questions, sir?
Nope.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
And we were never in the news as Luzerne County was or other places were.
Well, thank you.
You really have. It's worked out really, really well.
And thank you for always giving our office the resources and the support that we need.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 230342.
Send appointment to the Lockawana County Housing Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lockawana County Housing Authority, Mary Elizabeth Nealon-Clarkes-Greens, who a five-year term to commence immediately and expire December 31st, 2028. Adopted in regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on December 20th, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Commissioner Schermack, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 230343.
Appointments to the Workforce Development Board, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lockawana County Workforce Development Board representing the business sector with terms to commence January 1st, 2024 and continue through December 31st, 2026. Mr. William Boyle, Senior Vice President, Chief Credit Officer of the Dian Bank, Mrs. Sandy Fazul, owner and partner, Garrity Supermarkets, and Ace Hardware, Mr. George Sueda, partner of Condor and Sueda Advertising. Adopted in regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on December 20th, 2023. Mr. Chairman.
We received letters from both the Housing Authority and the Chamber to make this, these reappointments. And it's necessary, some of them are required by the federal government, and it's just, you know, so we're not trying to do anything lame duck or anything late. Just, I appreciate it. And entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second on the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board. Where's Joan?
She's out.
Okay, Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Schermack.
Well, kind of hard to believe this is the last one out of four years. That's kind of amazing that it went by that fast.
It does.
Some of the things that we had to deal with certainly weren't what I was thinking I was going to have to deal with. You know, starting out of the gate with that pandemic and no guidelines, no rulebooks, not knowing what to do and what was going to happen in the whole world, let alone just here in our county. But we pulled together, the help of Brian, PJ, Donnie, our new judge Frank when he was here, everybody on the sixth floor, Joe, Rick, we all, everybody pulled together. We did just a, how we did it was amazing, the help of Mark Doer here with our buildings and putting up guards and systems and it was just amazing. But I could tell you that I was amazed how we did things and how everybody pulled together. Our meetings in the hallways, sitting over here and over here and over here, we never skipped a beat. County never closed. We never stopped any of our services. We did such a good job, the governor stole Jason from us, but we had Sarah now, so Sarah's doing a great job with that, taking care of our seniors. But it's been an honor for me to be the Commissioner here with you. You've been a good mentor to me, even though sometimes we were arguing over some things.
Maybe disagree.
But for the most part, we got it done. So, you know, like I said, it's been an honor for me to be here. I'm looking forward to the next four years. We have a great team here. People do a great job here at this county. I don't think people realize how hard they work and all the things that happen here. But like I said, good team, great working with everyone. I just wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I look forward to next year. So thank you.
And to echo some of Chris's comments, I want to note that Commissioner Dominic has COVID, so that's why she's not here. And she wishes everyone a happy holiday. But it has been, it's been a challenge, it's been interesting, but it would not have been possible without the support of an unbelievable staff. Chief Jeffers, Tracy Hart, everyone involved, all of our directors and department heads, some more than others, but that's the nature of life. And it's been, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve here for the last eight years. Sometimes it's been a challenge, but it's still, you know, the right thing to do, and it'll continue going forward. I have a lot of faith in the new administration, and I would always be willing to help them with anything I can do. I want to thank you, and on that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have money all and paid away here. Valuable prizes from our United Way campaign.
Oh, okay. It's not on my agenda.
We better have you guys draw.
United Way, the first time in many, many years, Lockawana County has exceeded its goal the last few years.
All right. Let's do the highly coded parking spots first.
I'm not picking that one.
All right, here's one, Sarah.
For some reason was taped to the bottom of the bag.
Right. Why, you weren't supposed to pick those. You want to pick one?
No.
Nancy Craig?
Oh, okay. She's the controller's office, yeah.
Give her the good Christmas. Good Christmas.
She's got parking spots.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Number two.
Number two.
Mari Kelly, it looks like, Mari Kelly.
Well, she's got a spot.
Okay, is that's for parking spot?
Yeah, so we'll put her name back in and, well, you pick and then we'll put her name back in.
Don't ruin the bag. My wife's getting this for Christmas.
Okay.
I'm not kidding.
Unfortunately, yeah, we're sure of that.
Mary Shirts? Mary Shirts?
Mary Shirts.
Yeah, good for her.
Now we'll go Commissioners' box.
Oh, okay. You want to pick anything?
You want to pick a couple for me?
No, I'm good.
We'll get in trouble this way.
These are really like stuck together, Ben. Canio, no.
Canio, that's good.
That's in the box, right?
Jerry's picking the next one.
All right. We got, what, how many bags?
Four, five.
Four packets.
I know, he can do.
These are the downstairs seats.
Betty, she is, she is yours.
She's from the library.
Oh, okay.